We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Want to call to order the regularly scheduled public meeting, Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Monday, November 7, 2022. Some announcements, the township will be closed on Friday, November 11 for Veterans Day. There will be a Veterans Day ceremony on November 11 at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park. In addition, there will be an electronics recycling event at North Penn High School on Saturday, November 12 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Go to the township website for more information about collectible items and fees. Toys for Tots is currently being collected at the township lobby. Leave unwrapped toys in the Toys for Tots box in the lobby of the township building until early December. Next up, we have the approval of Resolution 2022-28 to accept $1,325,000 for PA redevelopment Assistant Capital Program Grant awarded for new public works facility. So I think we have the resolution in front of us. No, we do not. Okay. So whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has established the RACP and whereas applicant, we are eligible and have been established as a RACP recipient. The Pennsylvania Economic Development Financing Law 73 PS 371 authorizes Lower Gwinnett Township to act as an agent of the state for the public purpose purposes to set out in the law and authorize the township to contract with the Commonwealth in Pennsylvania. The whereas is continue and therefore it's resolved that Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors accepts the RACP grant for this project and authorizes the chairperson of the board, the township manager and the assistant township manager to complete and execute any and all applications, grant agreements, subrecipient agreements, and any other such contracts or documents. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And today we have present Senator Maria Collette and Representative Liz Hambidge, who were instrumental in assisting Lower Gwinnett Township in receiving those funds. And they are here to present us with the check. So I'm going to ask the board to come down so that we can be presented with the check. Thank you both. Next up, we have public comment. So any citizen present can comment on any agenda items that are not actually on our agenda tonight or those that are on the agenda. Is there anyone present? Can you just come up and state your name?
My name is Dick Target and I live in the Austin Circle. I've been there since October 14th of 1986. This year, I'm one of the active members of Lower Gwinnett Township. Friday is November 11. This is my 10th anniversary of having a ceremony. At this point, we can only say please and all the shooter probably should have put a pen up here. I know everybody isn't here tonight, so you can call her.
Call the supervisors?
I did invite them to come here. It's 7:00 on Friday morning. That's about 40 minutes. It's not a long day. It used to be a lot bigger, but a lot of things have happened over the years. We had COVID for a couple of years. We actually started, we had a little school band come and play. We had played the National Anthem, which started the stripe forever. And then we had the Baptist Church choir sing every year. And that was the first, this was three years ago, the first time that this choir ever sang outside of their church. And we sang several, you know, page drive kids, which was really wonderful. We had people from all races, military, I was a captain in Marine Corps. I was a Vietnam Purge. Homeless. We were in a unit, we had pilots and our prisoners working in Cambodia and Vietnam. So this is a very important day for them. And Veterans Day is different and wonderful. Veterans Day, we remember all the veterans who are dead and brought alive. Memorial Day, just remember the veterans who died in combat. And but it means a whole lot to me. Bill Leiter, he's our co-chairman. And Bill's not here tonight, so I wanted to show him the best of someone's work. And I want to introduce somebody, so I need to know who's coming. So I talked to him, so. And she's going to give me the list of names.
So I just wanted to, I didn't want to interrupt you, but all five of us are here. Tessie is available virtually. So we are all here. I can only speak for myself, but I will be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'm going to be there also.
So we will all be there.
So it's really important. And my concern is, a lot of you people probably weren't alive during Vietnam. And I don't want the veterans to be deprived. We had a lot of, you know, younger people or older people. We had people who were, we had two veterans from the Tuscan Air Force. Of course, they both died in Vietnam, but they both, yeah. And then we had a couple of postpart guys who died. And they were only 91. But they had a good life. But my concern is that if we don't make an issue every year, I don't want our township to forget our veterans.
No, I don't think it's possible. I mean, as a daughter of a, my father served in Vietnam. My grandfather served in Korea. I don't think it's possible for for me to forget or anyone to forget necessarily. So it is an important day and we'll be there. He's right over there.
She is going to be there with several officers. And we're probably going to have a party at the Spring House Avenue. We might need some help with that. And we had it one year that we would get it in high school. But the year before that, it was, we would not, it was like 27 degrees. And that's too cold to stand outside for that long. So we moved it to the high school. At this rate, it might be a little bit, but I think it's going to be like in the high sixties.
It's supposed to be nice.
So it should, it should be nice though. When the monument for this park was first erected. It's not possible to move it. There are really very few towns, very few people who drive by the memorial park. There's all the trees. The block, that's a beautiful monument. It announces about the Army, Navy, Air Force Marines. The Coast Guard. And somehow, like there's, as our supervisors, if we're on your agenda sometime, we could clear that area and make it more comfortable. And that was built, it was a house in the corner of the neck. And then that house, I guess, people died and then the road abandoned. And that monument is really big, it's right across the street from eBay. And nobody can really see it. And I would like to have that fixed someday. For sure. But please come when you're ready.
We'll be there. Absolutely, we'll be there. Thank you so much for coming and speaking to us tonight. Does anyone else have comments? Can you just come up and state your name and your address, please?
My name is Adrian Rowling. My wife, Leslie, and I do, I'm good with time, I just be late. We haven't been here since I do it. I have a question for Mimi. I have a question based on the conversation of the last Board of Supervisors meeting. With the conversation about how many projects are being included in the 2023 budget? How many grants the township has applied for? And the fact that there were several projects that were going to be applicable, and the grant was not found through the township wanting to include a small budget, so that even if the grants have not come through those projects, there wouldn't be money available in the 2023 budget. That's why I called safety. And so my question to Mimi is, what is the dollar amount, what is the dollar amount that has been included? In this saving that for 2023 days, the township does not get all of the
Well, we're going to go through the budget. It is an item on the agenda. I'd have to go, those are only a few projects. I'd have to go pick them out of the budget and tally that. There's a couple. Sure, I can do that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Still anyone else that has comments? None online? Okay, next up is Building and Zoning Resolution 2022-26 Preliminary and Final Approval of the Gwinnett Estates Act Life Retirement Community. The plant, they plan to construct a two-story building with parking for 40 skilled nursing beds. There was a presentation last week. Thank you so much. Could you just tell us your name again? Thank you. Thank you. So the application was sent to our solicitor to draft up a resolution. That resolution is included in our board packet. Are there any questions from the board?
We'll add that this is time we're able to get the sign, the agreement over, the
Thank you.
And the applicants already signed the resolution.
Yes, we provided a signed resolution.
Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion? Oh, you can come up. I'm sorry. You can come up, sir. I didn't see you. And I didn't say public. Thank you for reminding me.
Dan Stein, 800 armed members. If you point out on the map where the building and the farm would be.
I don't know if, is there?
There's a proposed building here. It's outlined.
Can you see it?
You know, it's probably easier that one goes more. I don't want to step on your toes.
Yeah, it's sort of the darker one. Yeah.
Yeah, right there. You have any other questions? That was it? Okay. Are there any additional questions from the public? Seeing none. Make a motion to approve the preliminary and final land development application. I'm gonna, let me just say if I should, resolution, do you need me to read the resolution in totality?
No.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? None. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm actually going to, here for the second one on your, yes.
Gotcha. Okay, so next up is Resolution 2022-27, huge request for one-year extension of retirements to post escrow for the 776 Johns Lane subdivision. I am, it's pretty straightforward, but they received conditional and preliminary approval for a six-slot residential subdivision, November 23, 2021. They're requesting a one-year extension from the requirement of the municipal planning code. That all applicable fees and funding for the financial security be accomplished within 90 days of the date of the approval. The resolution before the board is to allow time to pay the fees and to provide the required financial security. It's not a reconsideration of the land development proposal. Is there any, or are there any questions from the board?
My only question, Neil, is has applicant signed?
Yes.
Okay, so they've agreed to the?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm good with it.
And the amount of the escrow will take into account parent economic conditions?
Yeah, at the time they're ready to proceed, the escrow will be recalculated by the township engineer.
Are there any additional questions? Are there any questions from anyone in the pod? Seeing none, we have before is the Resolution 2022-27, huge request for one-year extension, the requirement of post escrow for 776 Johns Lane subdivision. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. So I think we're going to move something around a little bit. We have a presentation for somebody, but I think we are not ready yet. Is that correct? Okay, so we're going to turn it over to Mimi to go over the 2023 budget.
Thank you. So the board has the 2023 preliminary budget. At the end of the meeting, I will be asking you to authorize advertisements of this budget. It has to be available for public comment for at least 20 days prior to adoption as a final budget. If, you know, hopefully you will go along with that, but that would incorporate any changes that you discussed tonight. So I'm going to go over and hit a few highlights that they just want to call your attention to. And then if you have any questions at all, you know, or want any changes, we'll discuss them. Before I go into that, is there anything in particular that the board wants to discuss or hit first?
I don't know if I want to discuss it. I'm just want to confirm that putting something into the budget is not the same as authorizing the expenditure of that money. Is that correct?
Um, for significant expenses, yes. The budget is authorizing, the whole point of the budget is to authorize expenditure of the money. So there's a lot of things that are going to happen that would not come back to the board because it's part of the everyday business. But, you know, any of the capital projects are not going to go ahead without board approval. The big purchases are not of the vehicles and things like that are not going to go ahead.
That was my, that was my question. We're not going to debate specific line items for specific expenditures tonight.
But I would appreciate if you would, if there's things that you don't want in here or that you definitely want discussed more, that would be helpful. Because this isn't just the the financial plan for 2023 for the township. This is essentially the work plan. So you're kind of giving the staff our marching orders to get working on all of these things. And if there's things we should not be working on until it's brought back to you before we'd even start, that's the kind of thing that would be helpful to know so we don't waste time and resources on it. I think there's some projects that that have been discussed at length before that we know we need to come back to the board for different check-ins. But if there's something where, if there's a capital project in here that there's some misgivings on the board, that would be good to know, even if we decide to keep it in the budget so that we don't move ahead in any way without coming back to the board.
Understood.
Okay. So the township budget is broken up into operating funds and capital funds. The operating funds are in, all of the funds are in very good shape. But the operating funds are where you see them balancing for the year, where you want the revenue that you're going to receive next year to at least meet the amount that you're going to expend next year. The capital funds vary a lot more. And that's where you typically have reserves that are both covering you for cash flow as well as ultimately funding the project. And those reserves can come from surpluses. They can come from grant funds. They can come from bond funds. They can come from all different resources. But the operating funds are what you truly want to have balanced. And Lower Gwinnett is in very good shape. The general fund is your primary operating fund. We discussed a couple of meetings ago, revenue. So that you know, for 2022, the major tax sources, which make up about 80% of the general fund revenue, have come in very high for 2022. We don't expect them to continue to meet that amount in 2023, partly because for your largest funding source, earned income tax, and two of your other tax sources, the business privilege tax and the mercantile tax. There was unusual amounts of back taxes that were paid that are not expected to be met for next year. That it's just, you're not going to sustain that. Plus, there's a little bit of concern about the economy for next year. So I did scale back a little bit on the business privilege tax and the mercantile tax, although I included most of an estimate I received from Ecollect, who also is looking at, they're looking at businesses who are not paying those taxes to get them on the rolls and including a couple of years of back taxes. But I just, to be conservative, I just, and prudent, I just tempered that a little bit. And for the realty transfer tax, which is, which is based on real estate transactions, just last week before I was finishing that up, I reduced that a little bit more than what I had showed you before. So $750,000 was budgeted in 2022, projecting $1 million. This year has gone very well. I've gone back to $650,000 for next year. That's still higher than you collected in 2017, 2018, 2019, the three years before the pandemic. So it would still be a good year. I went back and forth all over the place. It does, the fact that I scaled that back was just, I'm trying to guess somewhat closer where it's going to turn in. There's nothing that is, was left out of the budget because of that, because you just have healthy surpluses.
So just to clarify, so Ecollect did give you estimates?
They did.
Do we have a total amount of what we've received from Ecollect? Or is potentially a byproduct of Ecollect reaching out to businesses and then them just reimbursing Burckheimer? Or is it just all lumped together?
So far this year, it was $4,000 or $5,000 that's actually been collected. And that's probably all that we're going to get this year. But they have a number of businesses in the queue. So what they expect, they said that we should count on for next year between those two taxes is $75,000 to $100,000 in additional revenue.
Okay.
And that's split.
Split, yeah.
Divided here. Okay.
Yep.
So that's what they expect, but we, none of that's been actually collected.
So only a very, so in addition to the, I forget the exact number, the 4,000 or so that we've collected this year. They're saying next year is when we should all, we should start to see them. So I factored those in, but then I also scaled back a little bit on both of those taxes, thinking there would be a little bit potentially of slowdown next year.
Sure. Okay, and can we tell if they're coming through Ecollect or are they going right to Burckheimer to settle the debt?
We can tell, for those, we can tell when they're coming through Ecollect.
Okay. Yeah, I know, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Plus, Ecollect gets paid based on what?
That's what I was going to say. So I mean, there's no way to know, though, if they decide to go to Burckheimer versus Ecollect.
No, but the larger than expected receipts we've had this year for EIT, BPT, and mercantile were from Burckheimer of collecting. And they, going through their regular practices, but they just said they've been seeing this in other communities as well. They, and because theirs is kind of more systematic, it wasn't so much intentional. They're guessing it's somewhat COVID-related, that there were companies that hadn't paid, that are now paying taxpayers that hadn't paid the EIT that were catching up now, although there, there's nothing scientific to that. It's a guess.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Before we, I'm sorry, before we leave, just because I'm on this page. For the EIT, and this may just be my inexperience with the budget, but when we have the 2022 actual versus the projection number, why, why is there such a big difference? Is it because we're only in, you know, we've only been through October and we still have two more months? Or?
It's because Burckheimer transmits in quarterly allotments. So there's another really big fourth quarter coming. And then each month you get the intervals, there's like smaller ones, but there's.
Okay, that makes sense.
A big amount coming.
Can I ask a question, Mimi?
Sure.
What is the Divid rate stabilization fund?
So that is a fund that Divid maintains, that's sort of kind of a buildup of their reserves and good performance that they then make available to everybody who's a client of Divid. And they tell us how much based on, it's based on how long you've been with Divid and a number of other factors. So Lower Gwinnett has over $500,000 available in a rate stabilization fund. And there's no science to this either. It's usually a little bit of, you want to keep some there, especially if you're, when there's a little bit of uncertainty going in the economy, I thought it made sense to leave some there in case things get worse than we think so that next year you'd still have a pot to pull from to offset the health insurance premiums, primarily workers' comp and liability premiums. It's the three of them. But I did use $300,000 of the rate stabilization fund.
And it's, that's not our money. That's just money Divid has set aside from their profits or what have you that they divide amongst their municipal fines. Or I guess we, it is our money since we pay Divid. It's just, they're giving it back to us.
And it's kind of our allotment. It's part of it being the, you know, it's a Delaware Valley Insurance Trust. So as part of this, we're all, you know, a members of the trust. So it's a little bit different business model, but. Exactly. So it's, they would probably say, yes, it is your money. It's not really our money. It's not like we could go say, give us that check. But it is each year, it will tell us how much is available.
What do we historically use or have we?
I went back a couple of years, the last couple of years, you've used about half. I use just a little bit more because I like round numbers.
I just want to make sure, is your mic on, Mimi? Someone messaged and said that they can't hear online. It is on? I don't think it's on.
It's on, but not working.
I think that people online can't hear you. Sorry about that.
So I know that's all you can hit for, and then just one other piece from the revenue. So your stability pact is video, your dental fund, your streetlight fund, your hydrant fund, your fire protection fund, your recreation fund. And that's, you can really say tax is relatively flat from all of them. It's relatively fast in, I mean, you guys, flat across the mission and counties right now. You can see increases in the tax base for real estate tax because of development of construction, whenever building permits is issued that leads to it's just being offset by a number of assessment appeals that are, that a lot of properties are getting with that. And that is with the product that we pre-part along in the assessment timeline. Three years, you know, when we're counting the vast pieces, the further out you get, the more rate assessments you can get, newer homes, newer buildings. And arguments that their neighbors are paying less for a lot of the property. So it's a little bit of this spiral that we mentioned to another rate assessment. less for a lot of the property. So it's a little bit of spiral that we mentioned to another rate assessment. But it does mean that even when there's been a lot of building activity.
I just got another message that now you can't be heard at all. I don't know what's. I know that you're louder. I'm just trying to make sure that the people online can hear. Cassie, could you just let us know, can you hear?
Yeah, well, can Mimi just speak into, say, my microphone since I'm not there? The microphones on the desk are so much better.
Okay. You can't hear, you can't hear her or you, it's just not as clear?
It was way better before she made an adjustment.
So, but that one wasn't on? But you could hear her?
Yeah, until she did something and now it's very muffled.
Okay. Sorry about that.
All right, how was that?
Yay, much better.
So for the, there's the real estate millage rate is spread over different funds. You're, you're, you're fine for this year. You're getting really close in the hydrant fund to not being balanced. But you have a large surplus in your general fund. So it may be something in coming years where you want to think about just adjusting the allocation of the millages, even if you don't change your total overall millage. So it wouldn't be a tax increase. People don't need to pay more, but you may want to shift things around a little bit. So just a heads up.
So you're saying that that's not a recommendation now, but we're getting to that point?
Yes, I know. It's, you're essentially balanced. You're off by a couple hundred dollars right now. And there's enough money in the hydrant fund that you'll be fine for that. But hydrant costs are going to keep going up. So, and your real estate taxes is not likely to keep up with that. So that may be something to take a look at. And if there was some interest in the board, it's sometimes can be easier to do that ahead of time instead of waiting till the avalanche of work that's happening as part of the budget. I don't need a decision on that tonight, just wanted to call attention to it. But we could take a look a little bit more through the course of the year next year, well before we get into budget, if you'd want to just be looking at how the real estate tax is holding up for the services it's supposed to pay for, if the breakdown makes sense.
Okay, okay. I think, I just personally think that it might make sense to be proactive.
So then in your general fund, far and away, your largest expenses are your salaries and benefits for staff. That covers all of the administrative services, the police department, code enforcement, building permits. There are no significant changes in services that are planned. There are a number of purchases for equipment and all that are in capital, in a capital reserve that will affect, you know, the public works vehicles, police vehicles, police equipment. But as far as the operating goes, that is pretty standard. The recreation fund is also a pretty significant operating fund that you have. And we did include the money for the pickleball court in the recreation fund, the $5,000 to restripe the basketball court in Oxford Park.
Where, where in the budget do we see the reskilling of Ingersoll?
That is in the capital.
But it's got the drainage, it says like Ingersoll drainage.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So that it's funded in the capital reserve.
Mimi, can, can we go back to the fire fund, please, for a second?
Do you have a particular question about it?
Well, I was waiting until I got there so I could look at it.
Oh, sure.
You know, we, we are still, okay, point one four six. We have been talking about adjusting that number, so we don't have to do it right now. But say, you know, next year, we, we continue to have the conversation about that and we decide to change that. Is, is that something we can do mid-year or, you know, just with a resolution?
Well, you wouldn't typically do it mid-year because your real estate tax bills are going to go out early next year. So people will have paid the tax, most taxpayers will have paid it early in 2023. You can discuss it mid-year so that it's, it's all prepared and ready to be included in the 2024 budget. And then update, you can adopt a tax resolution whenever you want. You could adopt the tax resolution mid-year. It just for your real estate taxes would not go into effect until following year when bills went out again.
Okay, I was really thinking more along the lines that, like you mentioned, for the Hydrant fund, moving the money around within the set amount of millage that we have already.
That, so that's, yeah, I think that's a good idea to do ahead of time because there could be other questions. It's just a little bit easier to give that a good bit of attention and make sure the board is provided with that information. If you're doing it before you have all of the other issues that also come up with the budget.
Okay.
I guess my only question is to your suggestion that you gave us in your packet, is it, is it beneficial or typical or best practices for it to be merged into the general fund so it doesn't become an issue? Where you have to separate it out or readjust and, and kind of review annually?
It's, there's no, it's totally up to the board. So a lot of municipalities would just pay for the hydrants out of the general fund and it's covered by real estate tax and the EIT and whatever else has come up. Some, you can do it also by funds. It's, you know, to have the streetlights and hydrants and, and fire. The hydrant in particular, all that's in there is the water bill. So, you know, I thought if you're going to be making changes, one thing to consider might be just simplifying things a little bit by putting it just in the general fund. There's, you know, there's so much emphasis here on recreation. I can see having a separate fund that just calls a little bit more attention to it. Fire, again, whether you did it as its own department in the general fund, so it was all called out separately or as a separate fund is a little bit of, you know, six of one, half a dozen of the other, it's the board's preference. The hydrant, I'm not sure what you gain by having that in a separate fund, but there also could be history there. You know, particular interests that, that folks have had for that. So it's up to the board. It can be done either way.
Does that make your job and the finance director's job easier to market?
It's a little bit easier than if you just don't have all of so many different funds.
Because it's just the water bill.
Because it's just the water bill. Yeah, it just doesn't.
Okay. I mean, all right, I'll just let you continue, sorry.
No, that's the point, that's the point of tonight. Cassie, did you have anything else about fire?
No, I just wanted us to, well, to see how flexible this is as we go into the year coming up. And we're having discussions about making adjustments for the fire companies in terms of long range planning. But we haven't thoroughly had that discussion yet, so. I'm just thinking about, you know, anticipating what we might be able to do.
And also so that, you know, I did include a note in the capital reserve fund where we have vehicle purchases that the township would be working with the fire companies this year to get a better understanding of the, the cost of vehicles and begin the discussions there.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
So the other significant operating fund is the sewer fund. And a very significant expense in the sewer fund is the amount that you have to pay to have the sewage treated at the Ambler wastewater treatment plant. So in the budget, it's the total is $1,270,000 for operating and capital costs going to the Ambler Treatment Plant. So that is, that is quite expensive, but obviously pretty necessary. Otherwise there, and that, I'm not aware right now of any significant increases for that. And otherwise, the sewer operating fund remains pretty flat. The capital fund, the O nine fund, does include projects that we discussed during the capital project budget workshop. Except now we also are including funds for, or hopefully we will be applying for a grant. So we have budgeted for those funds. We'll see if we get them. And that would be for two pump station improvements, the open door pump station redesign and the Forest Manor backup pump. So there's a Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant that we can apply for, for both of those. And in addition, we're going to include the sewer and water infrastructure that's planned at Ingersoll Park. We could include, would be eligible for that grant as well. So we're working on that and at the December meeting, we'll be asking for approval to submit the grant, do them shortly thereafter.
And Mimi, again, the difference between the projection and the actual is based on, like in the, in the collections, is based on they just bill quarterly.
They bill quarterly.
So we'll just be making up that difference at the end of it.
So I'm at a good stopping point because I'm done talking about operating funds.
Okay. Great.
We can pause for a second?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll pause for a second and we'll go back to our agenda. And we would like to present not only a good citizen award, but a copy of the Philly road sign to Noah Beck, who I think has just joined us. So Noah Beck, as being a good citizen of Lower Gwinnett Township, we wanted to recognize you, your inspired idea to rename Houston Road to Phillies Road during the 2022 World Series between the Phillies and the Houston Astros. Your public spirited initiative to ask Lower Gwinnett Township to make your idea a reality and the excitement and goodwill in the Lower Gwinnett community and beyond that resulted from the installment of the Phillies road sign. So given this seventh day of November 2022, we wanted to award you the Good Citizen Award. And we wanted to also thank the sign company that helped us in actually changing Houston Road's road signs. Stephen and John D G D Giovanni from Corn, oh my goodness, Concourse Auto. Thank you so much for helping us accomplish that. Thank you so much for gifting one for Noah. So Noah, we wanted to say congratulations and thank you so much. I'm going to come down and give it to you. That's okay.
We do a picture with the family?
Noah, let's take a picture really funny. You guys want to come down and take a?
Hold it, hold up the sign. Get mom, get mom and dad.
Do you own, the board should go down. Thank you, Noah.
Next year.
Yeah, next year.
Next year.
Got him.
I'll turn it back over to Mimi, but I think that there, somebody had their hand raised. Is there a comment from the? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I can't see that well. Turn it back over to you, Mimi.
And I am almost done. So we did spend a lot of time on capital projects during the budget workshop. What you have, the five-year capital plan is in the front of the budget that has the multi-years. And then for the projects that are proceeding in 2023, they're listed under the Capital Reserve Fund, the Stormwater Fund, the Traffic Impact Fund. And then there's a matrix in the beginning of, excuse me, of the Capital Reserve Fund that, that shows where the money is coming from, which fund is paying for the different projects. So a couple, just to highlight, you know, there's several different, there's the Park Master Plan that is going to proceed. There are the improvements at Ingersoll for the drainage and the parking lot pavement. Veterans Park, we are going to try to figure out what kind of sign to put there. There is money in the budget for the Public Works Garage to work in the design and a consultant to explore options for renovations to the fire substation up at Falkways. As I mentioned before, there's, there's vehicle and equipment that's in capital reserve. The road paving program will happen next year, as it does every year. Most of that will get funded out of the Liquid Fuels Fund, but there is a little bit in capital reserve in the sewer capital fund. I did want to call the board's attention to the use, the planned use of the ARPA funds. So we do have contributions to the fire companies, ambulance company, and a little bit of money set aside for document scanning. But the big contribution or the big funding would be for the Old Bethlehem Pike Bridge Replacement as the first project that was lined up for ARPA funding, assuming we don't get the local shares grant, which is seeming less likely now. So you know, we'll go ahead with that. You would still have 100,000, a little more than that left in ARPA funds, which I thought for now was, was enough to just leave as a cushion in case prices come in a little bit higher for the, the bridge replacement. But in the 2024 budget, you have to have appropriated, you have to have authorized all the money. So hopefully we will at least be at a point where we'll have good costs for that project and know for sure that you're going to be using that money so that any remaining balance would be included in the budget, even if it wasn't going to be spent. You have until 2026 to spend the money, but you have to appropriate it by the end, by next year.
So just to clarify, some of the capital projects that you identified, given the fact that we did get the RACP monies, do you still want to identify those projects as monies that the township is going to spend, knowing that the, the grant monies could be used for that, the architectural planning, specifically for the public works building?
So it's, there's a reimbursement grant, so the money would, you have to authorize us to spend it through the capital reserve, but.
But that is the limit of what you would be utilizing?
That's all we would get done next year. Yeah, so we can, we can put more in, but because you're just, you're at the, the early stages of design, so.
Yeah, okay.
And there's, so that's what our expectation is for these projects. If you, if you look at the actual munis budget, I mean, you can see that overall, there's almost $3 million in the capital reserve fund, you know? So if one project slows down a little bit and the public works facility is moving faster, there's money that's already in the budget. You wouldn't need to mechanically make any changes to spend that money. And of course, we're going to be talking about that in, in public meetings. So there, if, if it's like, hey, we can keep moving ahead, the board can just say, go ahead and do that without anything, without needing any other steps to change, because there's so much money in the capital budget. So the, the one last thing, and part of why I was kind of regurgitating again a little bit about the capital projects is I, I wanted to call the board's attention to page 37 in the general fund. It's the last page in the general fund and it's the transfers from the general fund to the capital. from the general fund to the capital funds for, for planned use of reserves. So by December, I, I hope to have for you more of a fund balance analysis showing you, you know, what's in, in the fund balances now, what's in your reserves with all of the different capital projects that we have? What's earmarked to come out of township funds, which, you know, intended to come out of, be paid for by grants? And, and what money that you have left so that we could have a little bit more in-depth of a savings plan where you'd want to be increasing money? But, and that's partly why I, I did not, I, I know there was a large transfer last year, this year, I'm sorry. I, I'm so into 2023 now, I'm already crossed the line into the open space fund that I think was anticipated for acquiring property for the public works facility. But it's, it, it sort of kind of goes to the hydrant idea too. Like it, it would help if you had a little bit more of a plan for how you want to use your different capital funds because you could pay for that out of the capital reserve fund and have that with all the rest of the money that you have, are setting aside for the public works fund. And it could just make it a little bit simpler. So my suggestion is at least for right now, and you can always change this, you know, later in the year if things were to change, is to not plan on transferring anything into open space fund with a surplus, but instead focus on continuing to build up reserves in the capital reserve fund and the traffic impact fund.
Do, do we, do you recommend that we move the money that was transferred for acquisition of land for the public works building? Like there was previously an open space. Would it make sense to put that with the capital projects or?
Maybe, but I don't know yet. That's where I need to do a little bit more of a deep dive and then begin to discuss it with you and understand a little bit more of the history of why, do you want to have a separate open space fund? You know, what is that for? Are you saving for that now? Or is it kind of just, I mean, my, my, my impression just from talking with staff is it's, it's been around for a long time. And it's, it's just, it's, you know, Lower Gwinnett was buying more open space back in the day. And, but that's not so much what's happening now and?
We don't have a separate millage for open space, right?
No, you have, but?
Parks and Recreation.
Right. Yeah, that you have a, a separate millage for. It's also, it's, was where the rent was going from McCormick House. That, but you don't have that anymore. So you don't have a funding source going into open space like you do.
Open space, the McCormick House?
It was. Again, I don't know why, because things, you know, got set up and?
So is there, is there best practices or is there, could there be a theoretical reason why keeping open space made sense? Well, we don't really, I mean, why would it make sense now? Is there, outside of the idea that we want to acquire a significant amount of open space? Would it make sense for us to have it separate? Because it doesn't preclude us from utilizing the general fund normally, like?
I would assume nothing precludes us from using.
No.
I mean, I'm not saying we would ever do this, but in theory, because there should be one fund.
There could be one capital reserve fund. You'd need, sewer needs to be separate.
Like a sewer, a general and a capital reserve. I mean, there literally could be three funds that funds everything that the township does.
Well, Parks and Rec has its own millage, so it might make sense to keep them.
But ultimately?
But we don't have.
But you, you don't need to.
You don't have to.
I mean, it's just. It's just an accounting method.
Would, would it make sense for like in, when this process is over? Because I know it's overwhelming for all of the staff and, and, and everybody getting all this together and done. But maybe in the winter or in the spring, when this is over, to have sort of a discussion about changes that we can make to make things more seamless, make it simplified, streamline the process and then well in advance of getting started on the next budget so that we can like vet these ideas and?
Maybe, maybe have that conversation with our finance director, the outside finance people and see what makes the most sense going forward.
Yeah, and, and it definitely makes sense to do it. Now is not the time to do it because there's just so many, there's too many moving parts at, at the end. And, you know, it's definitely better to have that laid out beforehand. So, you know, probably after the audit is done, when there's a new finance director, but like, you know, spring, maybe when there, there's plenty of time before the heavy lifting and the budget's happening. It would be good to think about all of that. And it's, and it's totally up to the board's discretion. You can have funds because you want to just emphasize, you know, the importance of something. Or there's certain, you really want to be tracking your recreation fees and, and whether that's paying for certain expenses, you can see if it's balanced or not. I mean, you, you supplement the rec, you know, a lot of the, you know, the recreation fund with transfers in from the general fund.
Right, right.
So we often do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we often do it for other funds too, correct? So if you go over or if it's, we're just transferring from the general fund, does it make the accounting a little bit more tricky is I guess my question.
It, it just adds to a little bit more work and it, it just cuts everything up as you're putting the budget together to say, what is your, how much is your budget? Was it the general fund? Is it the general fund plus the recreation fund? Is the general fund plus the hydrant fund plus the fire fund plus recreation? You know, I mean, it's just.
It's all one pool of money.
It is all one pool of money. So you can have it as one fund, you can have it as five funds. You could have it as three funds if maybe you still wanted some separation because it's easier to track some expense. So it'd be totally up to the board's preference, but it may be worth it to take a look again at that.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from the board?
I just had one note. I think, I don't know if it's a typo, but I think we said we were putting the 15,000 for the tree giveaway.
Oh.
But I think it only looks like it's 10 in the?
Yeah, those numbers, though, I will say, I did notice that it's 20 and 30 and the budget's 30 plus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, you're right.
It was 20 and 15.
It is supposed to be 15. Thank you. Good catch. It is, was not trying to reduce the tree giveaway. See, that's why you can't have major changes happening. The end. I will fix that.
Any additional questions? Are there any questions from the public? Is that all you had, Mimi?
It's all I have.
Thank you so much. So with that, I want to make the motion to authorize the preliminary budget for approval. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from anyone online or in person from the public? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, we have approval of the minutes of the October 17th and the October 25th meeting. Was everyone able to review the meeting minutes? Are there any questions? Make a motion to approve and accept the minutes from the October 17th and the October 25th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is updates on township commissions and, and board subcommittees. I'm not sure exactly who got to meet since our last meeting, but I'm thinking it was Park and Rec and the EIC? No?
EIC meets this week.
Okay. No Park and Rec?
Not yet.
No Historic? I'm assuming that there's no updates then. There we go. Okay. Um, staff updates? Oh, you're going to come on up?
Brad and I had, Brad and I had an update.
Brad and I had an update on a project on Hunt Seat Drive, but I pulled the record plan in advance of this meeting and I want to consult with Neil about some things. So we'll just table it and we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
Sound fair?
Sounds awesome. Chief, do you have anything to add?
We're going to be a very successful new campaign at Giant on Saturday for Mattie Dixon.
On Saturday, the Police Department hosted a food giveaway or food donations for Mattie Dixon in Ambler. And we filled, filled our truck and we filled up a trailer that we pulled behind the truck. So it was very successful. People were really behind it. It was a great day.
Awesome.
Steve just left. Of course, I was going to give him a compliment. The guy that made the sign for the Phillies.
Yeah, I wish.
Concourse Auto Motive does all the work on the police cars.
Yeah.
They do all of our upfitting. That's who.
That's why I didn't want them to leave, but I know.
I know.
It's, we're bored.
But just so the board knows, that's, that's who Steve is. He's a great guy. His company's over in Horsham. He does upfitting of police cars in this whole general area. Very detailed oriented. I'm not surprised that the sign looked perfect. That's him. That's all.
Any other staff updates? No? Okay. Tessie, do you have supervisor comments?
No, I, I do want to congratulate all the individuals for bringing in the, the million dollar grant. That, that's wonderful for the township. So congratulations to all those who worked on that.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mimi, Jamie, Mary, all the staff that works on this budget. It's a lot of work. You make it look like it's not, but I know it is. And thanks so much for keeping our numbers in order.
Janine?
No, nothing further. I echo everybody's comments.
I, I same. I echo everyone's comments. Like, the, the staff has been awesome. You've done a great job, especially through the budgeting season. So thank you all for all your hard work.
I'm going to echo everyone's comments, but I also want to make sure that we have on the record to thank Senator Colette and Representative Hambidge for coming out and for also all their diligence and hard work and advocacy on behalf of Lower Gwinnett Township to ensure that we got part of the RACP grant monies and brought it back to Lower Gwinnett Township. Also want to congratulate Noah Beck on being a very civically engaged young man and having his head in the game when it came to what we needed to do in Lower Gwinnett. And I also want to thank our public work staff for turning that thing around so very quickly and, and Fred for orchestrating it. And, and a huge thank you to Concourse Auto, Stephen and John D Giovanni for attending the meeting, for being a part of it, but also for, for their assistance and, and their generosity as far as us getting that done. With that, I want to make a, oh, I also want to encourage everyone, I don't know if everyone's aware, tomorrow is election day. So I want everybody to ensure that everybody knows that they can go out and do their civic duty and vote. And as Mr. Target made us aware, November 11th, this upcoming Friday is Veterans Day. So again, we mentioned it in the beginning, but November 11th at 11:00 AM at Veterans Park, we will have a short Veterans Day celebration and ceremony. That I would like to make a motion to.
One more thing.
Okay.
Shell reminding me, I don't think.
Oh, yes, please. For the minutes prior to this meeting, we did have executive session on real estate and personnel matters. Thank you. Like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.